Hey guys, we are starting, this is our session two of our online war room Bible study that we're using, we're doing via Zoom. And so, um, we're just gonna get kicked off and get started. If you missed the first session, it is uploaded on our Facebook page. We have a Facebook, um, huh, just a second. We have a Facebook group that is open to anybody. And also on my YouTube channel, which is Rachel Harrelson, R A C H A E L H A R R E L S O N. So we're just getting started. Um, and so people will be joining us as we go because that's, you know, it's just the nature of it. So if you have a book, we will, we will be starting on page 20. If you don't have a book, um, we actually have, um, I've uploaded this on the group page. So you could go in and get that real quick if you needed to do that. So you'll be able to follow along. I have everyone muted at this time, but if you want to interject or have something to say, you can go down depending on your device and you can unmute yourself. And this is just Bible study. So if you wanna say, hey, I, you know, I had that encounter, I've dealt with that or whatever, by all means, let's, you know, you can interject. Um, you are recorded, so just let you know that as well. And it will be uploaded on YouTube and Facebook. So, let's get it started. I do apologize ahead of time, I have a cold. Um, so I have my tissue and I hope that it doesn't get too ugly on this video. So, alright, so we're on page 20 of the War Room book. And, um, at this point, last Sunday, we did the first session. And it was pretty interesting. I like how, um, it started with an honest evaluation of yourself. Because a lot of times, I found myself when I was praying and doing our homework, that we kinda want to skip to the idea of, okay, I just wanna know how to make my prayer life effective. I don't wanna deal with all this self-evaluation or, um, this accountability stuff. And, and all these, the, the points that I had talked about in the first session and then in our homework. Because our homework basically was talking about you and your relationship and your, um, you know, how you view Christ likeness and how you, um, how other people can help each other. And different things of your spiritual walk, your life, your walk with God. That really kinda is the key to effective prayer life, right? You have to start with yourself. Some people kinda might have wanted to start this and say, hey, I just wanna save my marriage. Can you just hurry up and tell me how to pray for that, that it's gonna work? And, um, that's kinda not how it works. So, I love that this book gently starts walking us through this. I love the movie, obviously it was excellent movie. Um, and tonight, we'll have, we have the clip from the DVD that goes along with it. But alright, so session two, let's get started. So real accountability. Now, I've, I've spoke many times about accountability and it's something that's very, um, strong on my heart. But accountability is a dirty word for a lot of people. Um, a lot of people just kinda cringe at the thought and the idea. Um, Nicole, and, and two guys, especially you guys that are not on us live, we have a chat box at the bottom, um, or a chat box that is in our, um, system. And Nicole chimed in, "That was definitely difficult to actually sit down and make you truly think about your prayer life and your relationship with God." Absolutely, you know, you have to look inward, um, before you can do for others or before you can be effective in others' lives. You have to have, you're, you have to be lined up with God first. So, real accountability. This week is about accountability. Wounds from a trusted friend. Hmm, perhaps you have someone in your life who's willing to walk through difficulty with you. Maybe your life lacks that type of solid friendship. To have a friend like that, you should be a friend like that. So that's the same concept to, to pray for people. You have to start, you have to be that person. If you want people to do for you, then you need to be that person. I tell my daughter, if you want friends, you gotta be a friend. But if you want kindness, you gotta be kind. If you want someone to bless you, you have to be a blessing. That's just kinda how the nature of, of God works. He, he doesn't want, he's not just gonna let you sit back and collect when you aren't doing as well. Proverbs 27:6 at the bottom of that beginning page says, "The wounds of a friend are trustworthy, but the kisses of an enemy are excessive." It's Proverbs 27:6. So we're about to talk about that a little bit. So it says, "Welcome to Week Two. Begin this week by sharing portions of your individual study experience from Week One. Use the following questions as your cue." So we had our homework, we had three days of homework. You could do them any days that you wanted to, however that worked out for you. So anybody wanna chime in on what stood out most to you during last week's group discussion or devotional studies, which were those three days of homework? Anybody have any kinda, um, insights about their, their homework that really stood out to them? I, personally on day one, I'm, I love Acts. Like it's just, I just love the Book of Acts. And I liked where it talked about, uh, the church being connected in, in unity and how effective it was. They were multiplying the church and the believers daily. Um, that is just so amazing to me. And it's all because they were unified in belief, but they were also unified in the reasons, um, that they did. They were, it said that they sold their, their clothing and their, or they sold their possessions and took care of the poor and came together in unity. Um, I, I, I just really enjoyed the reading about how God pulls us, um, together and unifies us for a, a purpose that, um, is just so much greater than us. That was, that's one thing that stuck out with me, I know, with our, one of our homework days. Alright, so I'm gonna just keep going. What spiritual evaluations or commitment, commitments did God lead you to make this past week? Now, some of you guys may have, have made some specific commitments and, and you may not wanna share that. Um, and some of you may have, you know, thought some things through. I hope that it did. I hope that it provoked you to, um, look at those things and say, okay, because, um, on page 19 of Day Three's homework, the previous page, you know, it asked some pretty good questions about, um, basically as an evaluation tool and commit to take steps to improve in areas where you're lacking. So, you know, I, some of these are, don't, you know, they don't really, um, deal with me so much. But some of them did, and they kinda stepped on my toes a little bit. Like, "Do you see, uh, no evidence of answered prayer? Do you have time for entertainment, but not for Bible study, prayer, or sharing your faith?" Now, these questions, what I found is, um, some of them, when I was reading them, I could think of other people that they pertain to. And I kinda felt convicted because God was like, "I'm not talking to you about other people. I'm talking to you about you." And I think to me, Day Three's homework kinda revealed a little bit of a judgmental heart or, um, a judgmental spirit inside of me to, why was I thinking about, well, I know somebody else that has that problem? Or I know this one or that one that enjoys this versus spending time with God? And, you know, I had to pray about that. I had to immediately stop and be like, you know, this isn't right. And, you know, thank you for revealing that to me. Um, but obviously now it's something that I'm praying about specifically because, uh, this, this study helped pull that out. And I never would've thought that I had any kinda judgment in my heart, you know, towards other believers. Alright, so Nicole said, "Learning to give our all to God, whether that be family, friends, being stressed out, but still being able to give it to Him, that is very hard for me to do." Cause she's a control freak, cause we talked about that in, um, our, uh, session last week. That control was one of those things that was very hard to give up to God. And so, um, yeah, definitely, that's, that's great that it can open up your eyes and in your mind. I think that's what this homework's for, is to make us look inward and then upward, you know? Or, or vice versa, look upward then inward. So either way, we're going to evaluate ourselves and move forward because our prayer life is just that. That's our direct communion, communication with our Lord. And to be effective, then there needs to be no boundaries and no hindrances between us and God. Thank, I'm just so thankful for Jesus that we're able to have that personal relationship straight from us to the Father. Um, but there's so many hindrances that we put there that keep that, that direct phone line with static in it, with, with junk. You know, where we're trying to control situations or we're being judgmental, like I was dealing with. So, the next little section says, "As a group, read the following Psalm aloud. Is this a prayer you would willingly pray?" So I'm gonna read this. It's Psalms 141, 3 through 5A, just the beginning part of 5. "Lord, set up a guard for my mouth; keep watch at the door of my lips. Do not let my heart turn to any evil thing or perform wicked acts with men who commit sin. Do not let me feast on their delicacies; let the righteous ones strike me. It is an act of faithful love; let him rebuke me; it is all for my head; let me not refuse it." That's a, that's, I mean, honestly, that's a little heavy at times, you know? If you, if you pray that with a truthful heart. "One of the priceless benefits of Christian community is accountability. It takes time as a group to, to define that term." Anybody wanna weigh in on what they think accountability actually means? I feel like for some people, it's definitely, um, different. I dealt with, I've worked with in the past and with my personal past and with others that I cared for, I worked with addicts. And one of the biggest things that they tell us and we talk about is accountability. And that you have to have that accountability partner. So sometimes when I hear accountability, I think of it in terms of being addicted to drugs and having someone to keep you, um, on the straight and narrow, so to speak. But accountability can take on a couple of different forms for different people. And depending on what you're dealing with and who your accountability partner or partners are. So anybody got any, anything they wanna weigh in on that and just jump in there? "How is accountability best utilized? And how have you seen it abused?" I've seen accountability abused. Um, people that have stepped into the role of an accountability partner, but had a heart of judgment or pride or arrogance, um, can use that opportunity to ultimately wound the person that they're supposedly being accountable with or supposedly that their idea is to be helpful. And what happens is they're using that as kind of a power struggle or a, um, a place to feel strong, but it's not true. I've seen it, people, um, be abused by accountability partners in the way of, accountability partner is also someone that you should trust. And so, eh, in some of my days, um, when I was struggling to stay clean, I would call someone that I felt was an accountability, uh, person. And at the time, um, they would give me good advice and they would tell me, no, you know, don't do that or I'll come over or whatever, we'll make sure that you don't do anything. But then they would go tell people. And that's one of the most insulting things, I think, when you're trying to be an accountability partner for someone, is to betray that trust. It's a very precious place. If someone considers you an accountability, um, partner, I do think that you need to take it very seriously as, um, like a covenant between you two. Nicole says, "Learning to give," oh, I'm sorry, "standing up and taking responsibility for your actions." And accountability means standing up, taking responsibility for your actions, whether good or bad. Some are only doing it to not really help. Like they're, they're only doing, um, being accountability partners to not really help. Is that kinda where we're at, Nicole? Is that what you're trying to convey? They just want the credit, but they, but truly doesn't want to actually help someone in need. Right?
Yeah, when you ask what the definition, well, it was just like standing up and taking that responsibility. And then the second part of it was to your second question.
It all like ran together on the little chat box. Feel free to unmute and share that, but, right. So people, um, take advantage of the situation. And then, yeah, definitely, I, I agree wholeheartedly with what you were saying.
They meet this person and done this, when in fact, they've really not. But they, they hurt that person further.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a setback. When someone comes to you and says, "Will you be my accountability partner?" Or "I think of you as account, an accountability partner." That is them putting their pride down and saying, "I need help in this situation. This is a vulnerable place for me." Whether it just be your daily walk with God, whether it be a carnal struggle, a temptation, a fleshly desire, whatever it is. They're putting themselves to the side and truthfully seeking help. And then when you abuse that, you're hurting them at the most vulnerable, private place that you can, you know? And a lot of times, people, people could even turn from God if they, if they feel like that you have been, um, especially if they're new Christian, if they're young in the Lord, they could easily turn away from church or turn away from God by, by your callous mistake. So being an accountability partner is a very precious place and, and, um, position to be in in someone's life. But accountability is actually for everyone across the board, all of us. Um, and the Bible talks about that, and that's where we're gonna kinda go into. So Proverbs 27, 5 through 6 says, "Better is open rebuke than love that is concealed. Faithful are the wounds of a friend, but deceitful are the kisses of an enemy." Okay, so, we're gonna go into this video clip in just a minute. Um, but, and I do wanna read this a little bit. It says, "The topic of accountability can be alarming to some in group settings. So don't worry, no one's gonna put you on the spot. Um, this study, uh, takes the work of spiritual evaluation you did on your own last week and establishes guardrails to keep you on track for new commitments that you've made." This scripture that they're using throughout tonight's, um, study about wounds of a friend are trustworthy. There, that is so true. That is just definitely true. I can receive hurtful things, so to speak, correction, rebuke, from someone that I know that is my friend and that loves me and cares for me. Um, we, when you are, let's just go in that clip before we go there, cause it's, it's gonna talk about that more on page 22. So if you're in the book, let's go over to page 22. We're gonna actually watch the weight room clip in just a second. "Tony Jordan," that's the, um, that's the guy that's in the movie, "is far from God and making decisions some might equate with playing with fire. Fortunately for him, he has a friend willing to speak difficult truth, even when it's ill received. Michael is a genuine friend who understands much about the role of accountability. This scene depicts the importance of that value in the context of godly relationships." Alright, so, let me get this video pulled up. It's about a two-minute clip. And, alright. Alright, here we go. Okay, so, I think, um, I think you had a pretty good friend there, you know? Um, uh, one of the things that we see in our society is Christians not willing to stand up and be that friend. Um, a lot of times, we're put in a place or made to feel, made to feel as if we don't have the right to speak into our friends' lives or our Christian brothers and sisters. And a lot of people use it, "Why are you judging me? Who are you to be judging me?" That's what you hear back. I was actually kinda waiting when I first watched this movie to see if that's what he was gonna say because I have been, um, in, in similar encounters. And that's what they say, "How dare you judge me?" You know, that kinda thing. It's not judgment, it's being a true godly friend and calling out the sin. Not, he didn't say, "You sorry piece of junk" or whatever. He was like, "Man, this is, this is not good, this is a problem. I need to call out your problem and let's try to, hell, I'll help you" or whatever. Obviously, um, Tony Jordan in this picture was not willing to really, uh, go there yet. But just Michael being able to call him out on it, hopefully sparked something inside of him that would make him either second guess his decisions and his choices or obviously denote some kind of correction in a way. Um, I think he handled it pretty good. Obviously, I liked that clip cause I'm an EMT and it's just funny because I'm thinking of the bonus, how many bonuses I would've got? But, um, the clip itself is, is just a cute clip, but it's really, it's, it's got some good groundwork onto what accountability partners should be. I do pray, one of my prayers, and I've been praying lately a lot for Christian brothers and sisters, myself, the church in, across the world, is that we're bold. Because our boldness has been stolen by a lie, the enemy that says, um, that, that makes you feel like you're judging people, when in turn, we're not judging people. We're supposed to go to our brothers and sisters and, and say these things in love. I think his friend was definitely speaking to him in love. Um, I think he had a relationship and a rapport with this man to be able to communicate with him clearly. And even though he got shot down, even though he said, "Hey man, my ma, my marriage is my own. That's my business, not your business." His words still meant something to him because he was a trusted accountability partner. So the open discussion on page 22. "Would anybody like to explain a moment when you've been in Michael's sneakers?" Now, Michael is the guy that was on the treadmill, he's the friend. "How was it easy or difficult for you to speak challenging words to someone that you care about?" You may wanna think about that, um, if you guys have had any experience with that. Um, I kinda shared my experience with it, you know, I, I've had some multiple situations and it's not a loving, warm response always. It's not like, "Oh, thank you so much for telling me I'm a sinner." So, it's not always easy, but it is definitely something that we're called to do. Nicole, are you typing? Okay, alright, so number two. And some of these, because this is a little bit of a different, um, uh, media form of us doing this, if you have something, just weigh in as you can. We have a chat box, you can also unmute. But I'm gonna, I'm reading these questions too, to spark that thought process in, in, in you and so that you can say, hm, I remember that time and that situation. Number two says, "Consider a moment when you have found yourself in Tony's place." Now, Tony is the guy that didn't want the conversation about his wife. And he said he wasn't the EMT and he wa, or the paramedic, and he wouldn't be doing CPR and all this kinda stuff. That's Tony. "Did you have someone in your life that stepped up and confronted your sin? If so, how did you receive it?" I have also had that encounter. Um, honestly, in the moment, I didn't appreciate it. I, I mean, when you're in your sin, how comfortable is it to be called out? Because if your sin was uncomfortable, you wouldn't be in your sin to stay there. It's a, it's a place of pleasure or enjoyment of some sort. And so you, in essence, want to be there. So when someone calls you out, it stings a little bit. Or it's, it's usually typically met with, um, defense. Or, "No, man, that's not what's going on" or whatever. But later on, and even sometimes years later, to this day, I appreciate that friend or that accountability partner that was able to call it out because out of love and out of concern for my heart, my soul, for my family, whatever the situation was in telling, I appreciate now because I got on the other side of it. And I was able to look back, um, that it could've possibly devastated my entire life, but they were able to call me out on it. Number three says, "How important is accountability in the context of Christian relationships?" That's kinda, you know, that's a big deal. We're talking about, we're not just talking about addicts, we're not just talking about somebody cheating on their wife or their husband, which these are big things. What about the smaller things? Um, what about gossip? How many people hold each other accountable? You and so-and-so standing there at the church picnic and you're like, "Yeah, I heard she was leaving her husband," or "I heard that, you know, she lost her job" or whatever. How many times do we, I mean, participate? But, or how many times do we call them out and say, you know, "I, let's just don't talk about that or let's, let's don't talk about that person or, you know, I don't know the truth, so that would be gossip, so I don't wanna go there." That, just that little bit of obedience and that little bit of being accountable can change the way people think and see and maybe would re-change the way that they, at the next church picnic, maybe they weren't talking about somebody and maybe they were the ones that was correcting someone else. Um, I have a good friend of mine that is very good at that. If you gossip around her, she would just find out, say, "That's gossip. You don't know if that's true or not, we're not having that conversation." And at first it's like, "Well dang, you're rude," but it's true. And it's, I appreciate that because sometimes it's very easy for us to move into that, that sin, that gossip, that lie, that, um, falsehood, before we even recognize it. And that friend is there to call you out, um, to pull you out. And I'm not saying she's got to scream it at the top of her lungs or she's got to say it in a, in a room full of people. But she has a very unique way of saying, "Ah, we're not going there. I'm not gonna participate in this with you because it's wrong." Without making you, you know, feel all ridiculously bad, but it convicts your heart. And it makes you start guessing like, "Oh, you know, I really shouldn't have said that or I shouldn't say that." And she's right, I don't really know if that is true or not. So it's not just the big things. Obviously, he's calling, um, uh, Michael's calling Tony out on an, um, an affair type situation and not having a good marriage and his marriage is in trouble. Um, and he's calling him straight up, uh, he's calling him out on about being a good Christian, flat out. "You won't do CPR on a person that is choking? Think about that spiritually." It's the exact same thing accountable wise. Your friend's choking on her words. Your friend's spiritually moving in a direction of bitterness or anger or hatred that's going to affect their future health, spiritual health. Are you going to just let them choke? Or are you going to, um, help any way that you can? Do the Heimlich, do the CPR or whatever, okay? Sometimes we would rather just call 911, sometimes we would rather just, oh, I pray about them cause they, they're having some issues with whatever. Or, "Oh wow, she is really bitter from that divorce and she's so bitter that she can't even hear what the preacher was saying, would affect, would, you know, be effective in her life." I have a lot of friends that have been in different situations and you can start to see that. It's like, "Oh Lord, I need to pray for her." But have you talked to her about it? Have you gone to him or her and said, you know, "Notice this creeping up in your life. I'm saying this in love, but you might, you know, how can we help you handle this?" Let's go to page 23. Alright, so it says, "Read Proverbs 27:6 again out loud." Now, that was on page 21. And that was, um, the, the scripture that says, "Better is open rebuke than love that is concealed. Faithful are the wounds of a friend, but deceitful are the kisses of an enemy." Now, your scripture may be a little bit different than that because of the version. "What does this passage communicate about the idea of accountability? How is it that wounds, strikes, and rebukes from a friend can be better than kisses from an enemy, um, like the Word talks about?" When you have kisses from an enemy, then obviously, they're your enemy. Why are they kissing you, you know? Or you don't realize at the moment and it's very deceitful. Um, you didn't realize over there, you're enemy? And they are sending you love and, oh, you know, all this concern and care and truth be known, they have no, nothing in them is in your best interest. But a, a friend, an accountability partner can wound you- But a, a friend, an accountability partner can wound you by their words, like of correction, uh, rebuke. And it stings for a moment, but the, i- it doesn't hurt, you know what I'm saying? It doesn't leave a scar. It, it opens actually up a place of dialogue. It opens up a place of, sin likes to dwell in the secret places. Sin likes to dwell in the darkness that you won't talk about and the quiet crevices that "We're just not gonna go there. That's over there in the, in the dark corner and that's just one of them things I'm dealing with, but me and you aren't gonna have that conversation." A true godly Christian friend is gonna say, "I love you, but I see what you're hiding over there. I see what is in that corner. And I'm gonna help you. I'm gonna call it out for what it is and then we'll try to get through it." But even just calling it out is the first step to, if someone else sees it, then you can't keep hiding it. Does that make sense? If you can't, i- if, one of the things in marketing they tell us all the time is, um, if you'll get the customer to repeat back to you what they're buying, what they think, what you, if you think this product is wonderful, if you can get them to physically repeat those words back, it speaks life into that thought and it makes them actually think what you're trying to get them to think. Okay, little crazy, little mumbo jumbo mind stuff, but if there's truth in that because the Bible says there's life and death in the tongue. And when you call something out, when there's something you won't talk about, it's either rooted in pain, unforgiveness, or sin typically. It's, "I don't want to go there. I don't want to talk about this. That's none of your business. That's my corner. That's my closet. Get out of it." Um, basically what Tony was telling Michael, "It's none of your business, man. That's my marriage. We're not gonna go there." Because when you are willing to talk about it and you're willing to be open about it, that's when God is allowed to move in it and the, and the light is able to shine through in your situation. In Psalms one forty-one, David writes favorably about accountability. David probably knows a little bit about accountability. "His desire is for God to steer his heart away from evil, specifically by means of righteous friends who will be bold enough to rebuke a king." You know, that's a good point. Sometimes, especially what I've noticed is, um, walking in ministry and in leadership, uh, sometimes people aren't so quick to come to you with those issues or with things, um, you know, that they're not quick to call me out sometimes. They should be. They should be because I need that. Every single person, every single Christian, like David saying, he's the king, but he is still a human and he is still a follower of, of, of God and he needs their sin. We, we're faced with sin every day, all the time. So we need good, godly, strong, Christian people that are willing to say, "I love you and I respect you. I'm not being disrespectful, but you said this and this is, I don't think this is right. I don't think this lines up with the Word." Or, "I saw you acting this way." Or, "I heard that this happened. Is this true?" Because it's not a good reflection of God and obviously there's an issue there. However, whatever. But accountability, um, i- is critical for every person of every degree, of every level. I believe that some of the best pastors and, uh, preachers, evangelists in the world are that way because they stayed humble before God, but also they surrounded themselves with godly, Christian people who would speak into their lives. Billy Graham, of all people, has godly mentors and, um, accountability partners that, to call them out and say, "Hey, man, that's not right" or "This isn't good." Sometimes it's the small things like, "I noticed you haven't been in your word lately." Or, "I went to dinner with you and it used to be all you would talk about is scripture and praying and now you just talk about football." Whatever. But God, if you have a, a, a God-given accountability partner, a friend, a true Christian friend, they're seeking the Lord, you're seeking the Lord on a daily, private basis. God is gonna use those people and each other to, to do that in each other's lives, to speak in each other's lives and keep us on the straight and narrow. So on page twenty-three, it's, it talks about these verses, right? So it goes into, there's five verses. Now, I've made this a little easier. I'm gonna share a picture, a document. Alright, can y'all see my document? Everybody can see my document? Thumbs up. It's got the scriptures. Alright, great. Yay. Okay, good. Alright. So that way, I just did the MIB version, kind of went with what most people use. Um, so I apologize if it's a different version for you. I, I just went with that, so we kind of all be on the same page. Alright, so the following verses, um, let's, let's read through them and then we'll talk about how they refer to accountability. I actually love some of these verses. Some of these verses are like personal favorites and it just gives me hope and strength when I read them and think about the people who have stood in my life and have been, fulfilled these verses in my life. So Hebrews three thirteen says, "But encourage one another daily, as long as it is called today, so that none of you may be hardened by sin's deceitfulness." It's, it's pretty straight up. Be an encourager. If it is today, don't worry about tomorrow. Don't worry about yesterday. Encourage people daily. So that none of you may be hardened. I believe that in our society, we have a real big tendency to get hard, hard-hearted, thick-skinned. Um, sin has a way of hardening us as well and it doesn't make us, we should stay, stay soft to the Word, soft to the, the voice of God, soft to His leaders and His, His children. We're brothers and sisters in Christ and, um, we should be able to go to each other. But if sin has hardened our heart, when they come to us, we're gonna be like, "Hey, man," we're gonna be just like Tony, like, "Man, get out of my business. It's none of your business." Alright, so Proverbs twenty-seven, seventeen says, "As iron sharpens iron, so one person sharpens another." That's a personal favorite of mine. Um, I really love that. I've had a lot of iron sharpening iron kind of situations and I believe that that is critical to us, uh, growing in the Lord. Is having someone else that's a little bit further than you in this and you're a little bit further than them in that and you guys are in the same path, going in the same direction for the same reason and you're able to strengthen each other and sharpen each other. James five nineteen through twenty says, "My brothers and sisters, if one of you should wander from the truth and someone should bring that person back, remember this. Whoever turns a sinner from the error of their ways will save them from death and cover over a multitude of sins." That is so huge. We are, this is just flat out telling you, you are called to call that person back. How many times have we seen someone go down the road of destruction? And say, "I seen that coming. I knew when they made that decision, when they started hanging out with that person, when they started, um, acting that specific way. My husband has a knack for this. Um, he can see, kind of, he can read actions. I kind of read people. He reads actions. And he'll start calling things out. He's like, "Their marriage is in trouble." I'm like, "What? They were holding hands and happy last week at church and..." You know, when you're talking about, he's like, "No, we need to pray for them right now." And I say that he doesn't say that in judgment. He's like, "I can see that. There's a problem there." And I'm, I'm oblivious. I'm just like, "What? They, you know, they just, they came together, left together and everybody was smiling." But he's able to identify certain parts, um, whatever he picks up on. And he is in sin himself. If he does not go to them, if he does not handle that, if he doesn't by led by the Lord to go and talk to them, you know, as brothers and sisters in Christ and say, you know, "Hey, is everything okay? Can I help you with something?" Or if they see something specifically, if he sees something specifically. Like if Tony saw Michael with another woman, it is his Christian right to go up and say, "Hey, man, this ain't your wife. Dude, this isn't right. This isn't good. We don't want to be those people because it's scary. It's, um, you don't know how they're gonna react." But the Bible says right here, "Whoever turns a sinner from the error of their ways will save them from death and cover over a multitude of sins." How many times it just takes those people that have ruined their life or in a situation of ruin or whatever you want to view as ruin. Let's say the homeless person living on the street. It started with one decision, to take a right or a left when they should've gone a different direction. That one decision then led to another decision, which led to another decision and it just goes on and it snowballs. How many people, how many Christian believers were in their place, were in their, their life, at places of transition, but never spoke up? That hurts my heart so much. Uh, and I'm not saying be arrogant. I'm not saying put your stuff on Facebook, but I'm saying go into that person in love and gentleness and kindness, in the love of the Lord and saying, "Hey, man, I don't think this is right." Now, you bring that to that person in a godly manner and they still choose to go their way, that's, that's on them. But if you see this behavior, you see this issue, you see this problem and you do not go to them, that's on you. That, that, you are supposed to go in love, okay? Alright, let's, um, let's go down to Galatians six, one, two. "Brothers and sisters, if someone is caught in a sin, you who live by the Spirit should restore that person gently." I love that, how it says it gently. "But watch yourselves, or you also may be tempted, carry each other's burdens and in this way you will fulfill the law of Christ." When I was, uh, new in the ministry and I started slowly kind of like coming out of where I had been and going into a place of leadership, I had failed myself. Obviously, I was still, um, attached to many addicts. Most of my friends were still dealing with drugs and alcohol and, um, that lifestyle. And a friend of mine told me, he was a godly man. He was in church and he told me, he said, "Do, be careful reaching into the fire to pull people out because you'll get burned." At first I thought he meant helping people and I was like, "How dare you say for me not to help these people because I'm gonna get burned?" But what he was saying is you be careful in those very situations of helping people come out because you will be tempted as well by that surrounding. I know now, I can maturely say now, that I will, it will be a miracle from God and then maybe he will call me later. But right now, I'm not called to ministry in a bar. I'm not called to ministry to, um, there are some people, like I know a guy who goes and sits in a bar every Friday, Saturday night. And he sir, he drinks coffee. He sits there all night long. And he ministers to people in their sin, in their situation. Um, there are people that are called to be in the middle of it, to be that angel, to be that voice in the middle of the situation. But at the same time, he's not called to something that he's already dealt with, most likely. I know that I'm not called to go sit at that bar because it won't take too many times of me sitting in that bar that I'll be like, "Oh, one beer's not, you know, it's not a problem." And it's gonna spawn something that I've already been, you know, free from. So you have to watch yourself and so that you're not tempted in that. Um, it does say, "Carry each other's burdens and in this way you will fulfill the law of Christ." So knowing you're, where you're at with God, knowing having that strong personal relationship is gonna allow you to be able to speak in people's lives gently. Gentleness is the fruit of the Spirit. So the Bible says, "Live by the Spirit and should restore that person gently." You watch yourself so that you're not tempted by the very thing that you're helping them from. And they carry each other's burdens in a way that you will fulfill the law of Christ because Jesus carried our burdens and then His, you know, here, "Come do what I do" kind of thing, you know? Ecclesiastes four, nine through twelve, and this is our last scripture, um, that they're referring to. "Two are better than one because they have a good return for their labor." If either of them falls down, one can help the other one up, the other up. "But pity anyone who falls and has no one to help them up. Also, if two lie down together, they will keep warm. But how can one keep warm alone? Though one may be overpowered, two can defend themselves. A cord of three strands is not quickly broken." You know, it's kind of interesting to me how they talk about twos, two, 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 and then it says a cord of three strands. And I always think about two believers in God. It makes the three strands. It's not going to be quickly broken when you have that accountability that's saying, "Whoa buddy, where you going, man? This is, that's the wrong path." Or vice versa, you're like, "No, no, no, this isn't right. You know, let's come over here." The world tells us constantly, "You are alone. No one understands but you. You don't, don't share your heart with these people. They're gonna hurt you. Hurt them before they can hurt you. Um, be constant in the defense. Don't let people in. Build walls. Stay cold. Stay hard-hearted." That is everything against what the Word of God says. Every single thing against it. Because when you're hurt and you're building walls, the, you know, the world gives you all these cute little Facebook quips and they give you all these little pictures and stuff where you're just, you're the cool guy because you're the hard person. You're the cool person because you've got the big wall around your heart and you're, you're tough and you're cocky and you're sarcastic. You are hurt. You're living in unforgiveness and you are not trusting God, first of all, to heal you, to give you eyes to see people. And you're not giving Him your trust. When you walk in self-preservation, you walk against the Word of God. The Word of God says, "I'm gonna preserve you. I'm gonna justify you. I'm gonna vindicate you. I'm gonna take care of you." And then it also says, "Die to yourself." So you live, when you live like this in that self-preservation mode, in that cold wall, "Hey, I've been hurt too many times, man. I'm not doing this. It's none of your business. You don't know me. You ain't my mama. You ain't my daddy," whatever your, your phrase is. "I got this." That used to be my phrase all the time. "I got this. I got this." When you walk in that, what you're not saying is, "God's got this. He's gonna be the one that takes care of me. He's gonna be the one that, that ultimately takes care of my situation." So I'm going to pull off of this. There we go. And we're turned back. Alright, so we're wrapping it up right here. "In your opinion, which one of the above verses best describes the value of Christian accountability in your life?" I'm just gonna kind of read that question and keep going. Read Ephesians four fifteen. "What does it mean to speak truth in love? How have you seen that in action?" Hopefully, we've experienced that, whether it be a recipient of the truth in love or it be an actual speaker. I'm plugging my computer. I was gonna give it to Sam. Okay. Um, whether it be that you were actually the person that spoke in love, I think that the scripture that went back and talked about gentleness, um, also refers to, you know, speaking truth in love. You're gentle. "Do you struggle more with speaking truth or speaking in love?" That, that question threw me when I first did this, um, was reading them myself. I'm gonna read that again. "Do you struggle more with speaking truth or speaking in love? What are some ways someone might balance both truth and love in their communication? How did Jesus balance both?" This hit me hard. I'm pretty outspoken. I'm pretty to the point. Matter of fact, I don't know if y'all got that yet or not. But I'm just, I'm, I'm pretty straight up. This is just, it is what it is. I, the truth isn't always loving, you know? But if I go to God first or if I keep my heart, um, in, in, in tune with the Spirit, then I'm gonna walk in those fruits of the Spirit, which means I'm gonna walk in gentleness, kindness, patience, peace, love, joy. And then when I speak truth, it's gonna come out as it needs to come out in love. But truth can hurt. It can sting. And if you don't have that speaking in love part down, you can hurt people and you can turn people away from God. You can turn people away from the church as a whole. Um, and so when I read that, I was like, "You know what? I do struggle with that. I struggle with speaking in love." Anybody can tell you, you know, "Yes, those jeans make your butt look big." Yes, they do. Take them off. You look stupid. But when you speak in love, and that might devastate them. I mean, that, some people that would totally, and I know a couple of them, that would totally put them over the edge. They would go in the room crying and they wouldn't be going anywhere with you. But speaking in love and saying, "You know what? Those jeans, you know, I, I've seen better pants on you. What about those black pants you wore last week? Those are really great. They look great on you." You're still speaking truth. You're still speaking in love. You're speaking in gentleness into how they're gonna receive it. Um, I had to learn a long time ago that what I say isn't really all about what I say, but about how they need to receive it, how they need to hear it. Um, I have to stop myself and say, "Okay, I wanna say this, but if I say it the way I wanna say it, I'm gonna break their spirit. I'm gonna hurt their heart." So I need you to tell me how, and I pray, God, especially my daughter. Me and her are way too different people, personalities. And I'm just like, "What are you doing? You need to do this." Or, "This looks bad" or what, you know, and I just want to be very hard, in matter of fact. And I had to say, "Okay, she's twelve. I need to bring it to her in a place that doesn't hurt her and break her spirit and hurt who she is as a person. So God, you go ahead and tell me how to do this because I can't. I don't know how." And usually typically I calm down or I'm emotionally detached from the truth and I'm able to speak to her on her level. And it helps, um, to speak in that love and that, that is a God-given love. God loves that person more than you do, right? He loves my children. He loves my children more than I love my children, which is crazy to even think, but he does. And so he is going to look out for her. And when I, when I surrender my heart and when I stop and say, God, I want to do this right because I love you. I, I love God and I love the person I'm talking to. I want to, I want to walk in obedience, I want to walk in gentleness and love and patience and kindness. Help me. Then he is going to do that. He is going to, to just calm that down, give that, that smooth little curve, or however it needs to be delivered, for that person to receive it. We also need to understand that people receive differently. And when we walk with the spirit and we walk with God, he gives us that discernment. He gives us that gentleness and that, that way of talk, you know? So what are some ways that people can balance both truth and love in communication? I don't have any great answers on this. Obviously, I just told you I struggle with the exact same thing. But I think stopping and talking to God first. Um, how did Jesus balance both? I think he had to stay in constant communication with the Lord because I believe that he would be like John and be like, cut some ears off or something, you know, like, I will, because I'm that person. I'm like, I will stab you in your face. Like, that's just, my mind goes there. And I'm like, no, 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 no. I can't just say that. I can't just be that way. And so I think Jesus probably had to really connect with God. And be like, okay, Lord, these people are dis- disrespecting you. They are spitting in my face and I'm telling them the word. They're doing all these things. How do I speak in love? How do I speak um in obedience and truth? And he did. He did. He always walked and spoke in love. I think it is a direct relationship with the Father. So I, this, this wraps it up. There's a prayer that we have here at the bottom. And then um you guys have, we all have the three days of home, uh, homework. Excuse me. And so um, and we'll go through that. And then next Sunday at eight PM, we'll meet in the same place. Um, so I'm going to read this prayer and uh if you guys have anything to add or anything, just definitely chime in, unmute, chat box, whatever you want to do. But our prayer today says, Heavenly Father, you are so worthy of all of our attention and affection. Each of us depends on the power of your Holy Spirit speaking to us. Each of us needs connection to other believers who will speak hard truth and love. Will you help us balance truth and love in our relationships? Will you help us practice true Christian, Christian accountability? We love you. We believe that you hear us and know our hearts desire to follow you well. In unity of heart and spirit, we pray in Jesus' name. Amen. I don't, I don't have anything to add to that. I think it's absolutely a perfect prayer that's been written by someone who is seeking the exact same thing that I think we're, we're doing this Bible study to seek God for. We have to ask the Holy Spirit to totally um show us these things, take control of our hearts and our lives and open our eyes. Um, help us to speak hard truth and love. So guys, I just want to challenge you this week. Um, I believe that when you take a step of faith and when you, when you try to uh do something for God, like attend this Bible study, you're tested in it. When you learn a new um revelation of God, you're tested in it, you know? So I hate, I don't want to like speak this over anybody or anything, but we might be tested this week on speaking hard truth and love. And one of the things, I think, the first thing we always have to do is check our motives. Why are you saying what you're saying and how are you saying what you're saying? It matters. So lining up with the spirit, lining up with God, lining up with the word. Saturate yourself in prayer. The situation in prayer. I love the little thing that's on Facebook. There's a picture that said, have you prayed about it as much as you've talked about it? So true. You know, I mean, like, shut your mouth and get on your knees. And then we'll see what, you know, if you're still talking about it. So alright guys, I appreciate you hanging with us. We're a little bit under an hour. I'm going to cut the recording off. If, if anybody that's on, if you'd like to add something in, feel free to jump in. Um, if not, we'll record it. I upload this recording on my YouTube channel, which is Rachel Harrelson, R A C H A E L, Harrelson, H A R R E L S O N. And then it's also, will be uploaded in our um public group on Facebook. So feel free to add some friends or send it to somebody, email it or whatever. If you feel like this is something that they would be interested in. Um, basically, when we do it this way, they're able to just kind of jump in. If you haven't done session one with us and you have done session two, you can catch up or you can just jump in whenever you want. So thank you guys and ladies for hanging with us tonight and I'm going to close off our recording. And uh we'll see you next Sunday.